And we call to order the John Day Planning Commission meeting on October 22nd, 5:30 PM. Would you please rise for the place to play? My pleasure. Hello, now what Commission role call? I'm Jim Spell, I'm here, obviously.
Valerie Maynard.
Ed Newby.
Linda Piper.
Chris Maynard.
Okay, we have an agenda. Do we have any amendments on that agenda? Pretty short. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda I've written. My motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a consent agreement which basically will be diminished from the August 13th meeting. Does anyone have a copy of that? Does everyone have a copy of that?
I do on the computer.
This one, did you all read it? Print it or post it?
I think the only one issue that I found with that, it listed Tim Hunter Wagner as not being present and he has withdrawn from being on the commission.
Right.
Anyone have any comments about the minutes? Accept the motion to approve.
I made the motion.
Thank you, ladies.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Gotta make that bigger.
Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing regarding PAPA 25-01. And first, we have to go through whatever Henry's pulling up, correct?
Yeah, Henry, you're gonna have to make that bigger. There you go.
Let me know when you need me to scroll down.
Okay.
Can you go closer?
I can't.
Yeah. I'm gonna ask Valerie to read that. She's gonna have to get a real close.
You wanna come over and read it off the screen? I will. I have to keep my seat.
Oh.
No, you can just see it off the screen.
Yeah, of course.
Before we begin, there are some important statements that must be read into the record in accordance with Oregon state law. State law requires decision makers to be impartial. Does any commissioner wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this application? Because you may gain financially as a result of this application, you own property within the area entitled to receive notice of the hearing, you have a direct private interest in the proposal, or because you have determined that you cannot be impartial.
None.
Does any commissioner need to declare any contact written or otherwise with the applicant or any other party involved in this hearing, or any other source of outside information regarding the subject of this hearing?
No.
Have any commissioners visited the site? I think we all.
Yeah, it seems like it has.
Yeah. Does anyone present have any objection of the John Day Planning Commission's jurisdiction or impartiality? None heard? We will now turn to staff for the staff report.
Okay, great. Nice try reading that in. I'll have another portion for you to read once I'm finished before we open the hearing. Just give me a minute to share my screen again. I'm just checking that you can see my screen is a title page here.
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, good evening. My name is Henry Hurley. I'm an associate planner at Land Council Governments. Myself and Trish, the city engineer, she's also on the line, have been working on this project with the applicant for quite some time. And we're glad to finally get it to a hearing and get it moving along. So tonight, I'll be providing the staff report. I'm sure you are all quite familiar with the property. This is the subject property in question for discussion tonight. The proposal is really threefold. The first is that the applicant would like to pursue a zone change. The property right now was split zone containing park reserve and residential limited. The applicant wishes to increase the portion zone park reserve and decrease the portion that is zone for residential in order to build an RV park on county land. The second part is site design review for construction of a new RV park with 21 spaces, including other improvements such as bathroom and laundry structure. And then also applicant is seeking to vacate a portion of the extension of Third Street, approximately the southern 30 feet. And this vacation will match the description of the existing built right-of-way on Third Street. The right-of-way is currently 120 feet. It'll go down to 90, which matches the right-of-way width for Collector Street. This image here, this is provided by the applicant. This is to show you the portions of which they wish to change. The area identified as PR is park reserve. They wish to increase that portion. And at the bottom, they wish to decrease the portion of residential limited. So basically, the entire top half, third even, will be park residential and the bottom half, near where the red is, will be residential limited. This is also a diagram of their site plan for the RV park showing 21 spaces. New access will be here constructed off of Third Street. A few issues identified. The first issue is the right-of-way discrepancy. From our research, it resulted from a bad bearing in the legal description. The applicant should record a new legal description with the correct legal description. And the right-of-way documents should be recorded after the new description is corrected. The second issue we found was a historical drainage easement from 1995. It may not extend to the end of the storm pipe in the street. And it's also unclear as to whether there's actual pipe there. The applicant is to verify the boundaries and record an updated easement if necessary. Staff, do recommend the applicant continuing on and granting conditional approval while they progress towards correcting both of these issues. They will have some time between now and the final hearing in front of city council. A few items of note that will require your discussion and decision. The first one is a six-foot tall fence. They want to put a six-foot tall fence around the entire property. In the front yards, fences are only allowed to be four feet. However, the planning commission can grant an exception if they find this does not pose a hazard to public health or safety and is compatible with existing structures in the vicinity. The second item, the applicant is proposing three off-street parking spaces with one being ADA. Those will be located near the new bathroom structure. There is no parking minimum standards for RV parks, so in this case, it's really the planning commission's discretion and decision. And related to that is also bicycle parking. If bicycle parking applies, how many spaces should be required? And I'll have more on that as we go forward here. The criteria for a zone change, as you've seen in the staff report, you know, it's quite lengthy. I did find that the applicant, you know, has met or can meet all of the criteria for the zone change. The criteria for zone change are far more subjective because they deal with the city's comprehensive plan and Oregon state on planning goals. The one area that, again, the planning commission will have to make a call on this, and it's like I said, it's subjective, and that's why the planning commission exists, is to make these calls. And that is, is the change in the public interest with regard to neighborhood and community conditions. So the planning commission, if they find that the requested zone change is in the public interest, then it can be approved. And conversely, if they don't, then it should be denied. And I believe I have that same rationale and explanation in the staff report. So planning commission should debate and discuss criteria for here. The criteria for the site design review, this is really where you get into the design standards of John Day's code. The first one I want to talk about is conditions of approval related to roadways. The city may require development or frontage street. And that extension of Third Street presently has no frontage improvements. So the city is requiring frontage improvements in the form of half-street improvements, which is sidewalk curb and gutter. And to be roughly proportional to the impact and to the development, city is just requiring 535 feet, which is the approximate length of the development, not the entire property itself. And you can see that there is listed as condition four. This is also related to requiring public improvements. If the planning commission finds that any of those four conditions are met, the city may accept a future improvement agreement. This essentially defers improvements to a later time. But during my review, none of these have been triggered. So it's my recommendation that the frontage improvements be required immediately upfront. And they also are required to address pedestrian circulation and safety on the site. So going back to the fences, item one, I believe there's a picture in your staff report showing a picture of the fence that is already existing on another portion of the property, of the fairgrounds, and it'll be very similar to that. From staff perspective, this is not really an issue. Six feet around the site is fine because it is set back so far from the road. And it'll be a fence that you'll be able to see through, so vision clearance is really not an issue. The second item, as I alluded to earlier, is the off-street parking. So John Day's table here lists outdoor recreation commercial. As you see, it says per C U V E review, which is conditional use, which is essentially what we're going through right now. That's just saying that it's up to the planning commission to decide what the appropriate number is. And the applicant has proposed three with one being ADA. And in my perspective, in my review, I think that's fine. An RV park is essentially a parking lot in itself. Customers bring their RV and/or their trailers or cars that tow the RV and park those within this RV space itself. So planning commission should make a call as to whether three off-street parking spaces is sufficient. And then item three, related to the parking, are also bicycle standards. As you see here on the table from John Day's code, I think first you have to make kind of two decisions here. Under institutional categories, parks, in parentheses, active recreation areas only. So does this RV park fall under that institutional category? And if so, it does tell you that there are eight spaces required, or as required by the city. So the planning commission should debate and discuss whether, one, these aren't even triggered, and if they are, then how many? So I do recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the zone change and the site design review with the conditions noted in the staff report. And furthermore, as I alluded to earlier, the three items here on your screen, we will need the planning commission to decide on those three items tonight. And the planning commission's role tonight is to make a recommendation onto city council. The city council will hold a final hearing on both of these matters in December. And then the next few slides are just a copy of the conditions that were in the staff report. The only one I want to draw your attention to is 16. And that's where I specifically note that the planning commission consider or recommend to enforce this one. This was recommended by the city engineer. And that is to require a fence around swell A for public safety because of the water depth being approximately three feet. So in addition to those three items I had up there before, I would also like your decision on condition 16 tonight. So that's all I have. We'll turn it back over to the planning commission chair.
Okay, the hearing is open, and we have an opportunity to hear from the applicant.
Okay. So thank you guys for being here and listening. So I'll start, and then I'll have Mike and Joe jump in where needed.
We all know who you are, but can you identify?
I'm Mindy Winiger from the Grand County Fairgrounds. So on, we'll just start to tell. First, it's 25 spaces, not 21. So there's 25 spaces. And on condition one, on the right-of-way, we did some more digging too, and there actually is no legal right-of-way. Nothing has ever been filed. We do agree that there does need to be a right-of-way, but I'm not convinced that this should really be at our expense. It was done in, I believe, 1996. There was an inter-office memo, but that's really if. Do you have anything else on that, Mike?
So in 1996, the county conveyed, and they made a conveyance to the city for Third Street. That conveyance has a description for the center line, which we've all identified has some errors in it. It doesn't follow the existing center line. That conveyance just describes the center line, which is almost, you know, the width of a pencil or less. I mean, there's no width associated with just the center line. And then in 97, we discovered an inter-office memo from the road department, and it just went to the assessor's office. And it has a slightly different center line alignment, so it doesn't even follow the original one that was needed. And additionally, that memo has right-of-way widths. I don't believe that the memo that's just from the road department to the assessor's office had any legal standings. There was no acceptance by the city. There was no conveyance from the county. And so I, what I suspect, and all the people that were involved in this at the time are not, can't question them. So what I suspect happened is the assessor sent the original description to cartography and Salem to do their mapping for tax maps and so forth. And whoever was drawing it up said, "How wide is this thing?" And then, you know, road department furnished some widths for it. But there was no conveyance. There was no dedication to the public or anything. It's just a basically a line out there. That's not right.
Okay, thank you. Can you identify who you are?
Mike Springer, Benchmark Lancer Bay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And so I guess.
I can't talk to the legalization?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a process in Oregon revised statutes. It's in 223935. And it is legalization, and it has criteria laid out for legalization of a road. And this situation meets it, I mean, it checks four out of the five boxes. You know, it's like the road has been in place and used for in excess of 10 years. There's errors in the original description. You know, just things like that. And this thing meets nearly all of the criteria for that. The legalization process is that the road is surveyed, correctly described. You have to place monuments on the center line as well as the right-of-way lines. And then upon acceptance of the city, and then the instant that that legalization document is recorded with the county clerk's office, it has the effect of simultaneously creating a new road, and then it extinguishes any previous descriptions or any documents that have to do with the old road, the center line or the right-of-way. So it gives you kind of an opportunity to look at correcting the center line issues and then putting the right-of-way in that everybody would agree.
So is it legally a county road right now?
It's, I don't think it's anything. It's a line.
Well, if the city didn't accept it, it would have been a county road.
The city, the city, they accepted the conveyance of the center line. And there's, I found some documents in the road department of during the construction phase, you know, what the road department agreed to do and, you know, the paved surface and all that kind of stuff. And there again, those are agreements that occurred in county court and so forth between the city and the county.
Okay, Mindy, back to you. Do you have more?
Well, like, you know, Mike said, it doesn't need corrected. But in your ordinance, you know, when we go to corrected, we're gonna recommend a 60-foot right-of-way, which is still within those your guys' ordinance. But I still don't agree that we should have to bear all that expense. So that's that. So I guess we just go on?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then on condition two, and that is on the easement and the storm drains. I guess my question is, is this still, should be an expense of us because it's an easement that the city needs for their storm drains? So I'm confused on why that should be our expense to correct those easements. And let's see. Yep, yeah.
So the easement, the 1995 storm drain easement, I plotted that with a CAT program. And it runs from about the center of northeast Elm Street, goes east for ways, and then it runs north. Has about a 45-degree jog, and then it runs all the way to the center of the John Day River. Additionally, I went out with survey equipment, located the manholes. Here again, we had called for a locate, didn't hit any locate marks, even as of this morning. Called for locate last Friday. So as of today, there were no locate marks on the storm drain. But we did, Joe Hitz and I popped a manhole, and we can see the storm drain in there. It's about a 30, 36-inch pipe. And we tracked it through manhole, and then we walked out to the river, the direction that the last manhole was pointing, and there's a 36-inch pipe below the high-water mark of the river. So there's no discrepancy as to the written description for the easement, and the improvements all fall within that 20-foot strip of land. There's really no issue with it.
Okay. So can you say on the easement? From you guys at this point? So on condition three, that's the right-of-way shall be required for any work to be performed in the city right-of-way. Traffic control plan must be required. So that's only gonna be needed if the city requires street improvements and utilities crossing the street. And traffic control, I mean, we can just close the road in this area to only access the county property. Condition four, to address pedestrian safety and circulation, the city is imposing a condition of approval responding construction of a side dock. Again, and I might have Joe talk on this one. We don't believe that we need to put in a sidewalk at this time. We don't have an issue with signing the guarantee that we will put one in when the city of John Day is gonna do development. And the street was constructed in 96. And at that same time, that's when the transportation plan was written. So if the city and county wanted to agreement to build the streets and, you know, the sidewalks weren't put in then. Our population has decreased since then by 12 to 13%. And we are putting in a crosswalk that would get people to the walking paths, which the walking paths do get to the sidewalk. And if, and then you're talking about public safety. If people are on a sidewalk, and then the sidewalk goes nowhere, I mean, they're going to go from the sidewalk onto a road that the sidewalk goes nowhere, you know? And there is no sidewalks on Third Street other than right off of, off of bridge. And again, we'll be more than happy to do it when the city is going to start that process. Historically, we've, you know, we've been using that for overflow parking, for fair rodeos, concerts, you know, large events. We've used it for emergencies, cycle Oregon, and we've never had any issues with vehicles and pedestrians. So we just, we'd rather sign the guarantee of when the city is gonna move forward with those sidewalks. And we would do that, which has been your guys' plan. Joe, do you have anything?
Yeah, so on the conditions for the guarantee, the first and second items on there, one is partial improvement would create potential safety hazard or water retention pedestrians. If you had a sidewalk, they're walking on the pavement, then they have to get on the sidewalk, then they have to get off the sidewalk. At our entrance, we're proposing a crosswalk to get over to the trail. But at the far end of the sidewalk, they're just getting back onto the pavement again. There's no crosswalk. When we get anywhere there, they're just kind of left out on the road. There again, so I'm not sure we really do a lot to help with safety along there by only putting in 500 feet. There's still 700 feet to get to the highway and almost 1800 feet to get to the next sidewalk on Third Street. And then the second condition on there is, you know, adjacent properties are unlikely to street improvements would extend in the foreseeable future. Everything's developed to the west of there already. There's not gonna be any future development typically along there unless something redeveloped. And going to the east, the rest of this property is along here. Like Mindy had said, we're not opposed to a sidewalk. We're just trying to avoid the sidewalk, like what is in front of the state lease up there that just gets us to nowhere. And, you know, when the day comes and it's ready to put a sidewalk from one end to the other, we're all on board with that. You know, Mindy's gotta pay for this out of her. You know, Mandy's gotta pay for this out of her background budget. And I just took numbers from the last city project we did on the east end of Seventh Street. For curb sidewalk, catch faces, storm drain pipe. You know, potentially an infiltration area to get rid of the water, safety repair, and we're at almost seventy thousand dollars. And then you still add in bonding, clearing, rubbing, traffic control, other things in there, I mean, we could be spending a hundred thousand dollars on the sidewalk that really doesn't. Joe, would you identify yourself for the record?
Joe Hits, this is engineering.
And then um, I didn't make copies for everybody, but the these are pictures of the sidewalk that was. Required to be in front of the state. Um, police um department, and as you can see, it's very, very unsafe. So that's what we believe. Would end up at the third state.
Melissa, do we need to anyway introduce this to the record?
That's first day, please.
Uh, no, they'll be part of the record, though.
One other thing to note, if you, if you don't have a transportation plan. Third Street Avenue is identified in there, one of the improvements you now have brought across, which is what we propose, you know, the program.
Um, Joe, can you speak up so that?
The other is um, the sidewalk along there. But then they have a matrix that identifies high priority, medium priority, low priority projects for the city. And Third Street is on the low priority, major project of all, not even on the on the top list.
Condition number six. Um, the final landscape plan, um. For show ground cover, tree size, diameter, five gallon pot shrub. Um, the city's code does not define any percent of the site for park reserve to be landscape. Therefore, that's the. Therefore, we should not have be required to follow any plant size. Landscape plan will show planting, fencing, and covering. Item one. On the six-foot tall fence, um, the photo that's um in the packet that's actually the fence of. Um, down on the city property. And we do not currently have a fence like that at the fairgrounds. See, the proposed, the proposed fence is a minimum of eighteen to twenty feet from the existing road shoulder. Ten feet beyond the right away. The northeast corner is five to six below the shoulder of the elevation. The northwest corner narrows the street and by the gate is about six inches below the road shoulder and there is gated thirty feet. So that should not be an issue because the road is above. RV park, basically. So um, bicycle parking. Um, within a RV park, um, travelers are likely to um. Park in their RV park, um, and. Not are in their RV space, but again, um. So we're not exactly sure who that bicycle parking would be for and the appropriate location for that. And then on um. Conditions, basically eight, eight and nine and ten. Is the plan to have a public work, this is my question, um, a public works director in place? Cause it says the city manager, but I believe the code is said subject to approval by the public works director. And um. And I just believe there's a conflict of interest if it is gonna go be the city manager. Um, because she has property bordering with our property. Improvements and so on, they have passed inspection. And so that if if we do not have to have the sidewalk, the only approved improvement is the new driveway. And removal of existing driveway. And that also goes with um. With the sewer and water, we'll just be hooking into your guys' everything else is on. The private property, so that should be just a state of Oregon permit. So we would like some clarification on. On eight, nine, and ten. I'm asking all that, right? There's a lot of information, but. So this staff does not define this in this is just public sewer and water, private will be reviewed and approved by the state of Oregon.
Basically, this site, Mr. Joe, this was just engineering, and basically, this site has. A water service to it and a sewer stub to the property. We'll be tying into those, the water service will have to be upsized for more flow than what it's currently flowing. Other than that, there's no other public improvements approached. From sewer and water. The. Basically, we would tie it into the into the right away would be the new driveway and then deletion of the old driveways, decommissioning.
And did I, I feel like I missed somewhere where um. Needing a permit for a new driveway, but we are. It's where the driveway is, there's already a driveway there. What condition that was? Maybe I'll find it, I should keep going. And then I'm gonna let Joe talk about condition eleven, and that's on the electricity. And our proposal on that.
So to talk with OTEC, um, currently, all the power that's in the area down there is overhead power. Where they would like to connect, to give power to this site is along the backside of the rodeo grounds. Um, the existing pole has existing lines coming. Down into conduit to go underground to the rodeo ground itself. But the new line to get to this site would run right along their fence, which would be. A potential area where rodeo grounds and replacing fences and stuff, it it. OTEC would just as likely prefer to have it overhead as they would underground right there for the safety of the line, but then. Once we get to the site, we have one, our plans, we have one powerful shown right at the driveway. And the thought was that that could also um. A street light could be put up there, so it would light up the entrance coming in to the RV park and the crosswalk going over to the trail. Um, and then from there on, we go underground with everything else, which is what the city requests that it goes underground. Um, either way, OTEC said they have to probably set at least one more pole to. Be able to split the power apart the way they need to up there to get it out to it. Um, at a minute. So I guess for that condition, I mean, we're we're proposing maybe a combination. Overhead to a point and then get underground as soon as we can when all of the site.
Okay, and then condition twelve, again, is just um having. The city manager shall have discretion in determining which improvements require easement to the city. And we again believe it states that the public works director. In that, I suppose just want clarification on that. Condition thirteen, um. An engineer's certificate and as built, and shall be provided to the city manager, the designated project is the first day of operation. Of an RV park.
So basically, I mean, we'll provide as built to any public improvement for doing this. Which would city, city's benefit and uh that it's been done correctly, but. Everything else is on site will be inspected by the state building inspector. It'll all be coming mechanical building permits um through the state. So I mean, depending on what the what the improvements required are gonna be. Will kind of dictate what we have to actually as put and provide there.
Um, and then on. Condition fourteen, before commencement of construction activities on subject property. A performance guarantee shall be furnished to the city manager or their designated. And that again, only on the public improvement. And generally from the contractor we hire, and that is same with condition fifteen and. And then on condition sixteen, um, on the fence around. The swell. That wasn't in, and it just kind of got um. The word, you don't know that it will be three feet right at this point. And then, again. I have pictures of the swell that just got put in at the health department with no. No fencing, so I'm not sure why we're required to put a fence. Down there, so.
As another example, you all walk right past the swell, someone will move a little bit on there in the way of the building. Thank you. Can you speak up, Joe? I'm having trouble hearing, I don't know about all the people, what what did you just say?
I said, the swell that we're proposing at RV park is very similar to what you just walked past coming into the building here.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, now we have an opportunity for other people who's. Support this plan, and later anyone who hosts this plan. Do we have anyone in support of what's being said tonight?
So, my name is Donald Palmer, um, I'm on the fair board, and I support the plan, basically. The amount of um kids that we have up at at the fair is growing and there's. It's getting harder for them to find a place to stay in camp, so I mean, our barns are expanding, um. Pushing up the seams there, so I think that having this additional twenty-five spaces is going to greatly help our. Our four-H kids as we move forward, as well as our rodeo families that come into town. We have playdays, five or six times a year, that will help with that as well. And then um for the concert lovers and things like that coming in, um, I think it would be. A great opportunity for them to have a another additional place to stay, so that's my support on that.
Thank you, do we have anyone in another hand?
Ken, um, you all, if you're gonna talk, fill out a form and actually put your name in. Yeah, oh yeah, please. You speak and then fill it out after, but I actually need copies of that, so you're now part of the record.
My name is Bob Fur, I totally support what the fairgrounds got going, I think the city is. Kind of getting away a little to make it in a timely manner, cause this already went quite a while. And this is my statement, is with some discernment for me. What is going on with this application and matter is being handled. After a late night, early morning study session, in additions of approval. Appeared to me overblown and unnecessary. They're time consuming, raise a total cost of the product, project. Also, there's an addition of a want list by the city. Through the years, the city itself has not obtained these easements, which they want now, and projects. And projects, which had nothing to do with the land use. Change to qualify for this project. I believe the city manager put these in for a larger project to leverage a county to pay for them. The county owns the land, period. The spur of the moment add-ons just complicate any project. The last manager tried to force the county using different schemes. And caused the county to quit all intergovernmental cooperation with the city. And we don't wanna see that back in here, in my term. In common language, I would call it blackmail. The city and the county's budgets are set, the fairgrounds have in their budget so much money for this project. The city is deeply in debt, but has to, but still has extra money to hire a strategy firm. A task that a manager should be able to do in a small city like this. The city needs this project. The city needs this project to go through as smoothly as possible. For a success story, as well as bring more people in to support its failing businesses. It is a win-win situation for all, the city should stop all roadblocks possible. As time is of importance, my name's Bob Fur.
Thank you, any other people in support? Okay, would you state your name?
John Raul.
John Raul, and uh, I support the work and the effort of the fair board and uh.
Many have put together an RV park on a piece of property in which will become more utilized. And benefit to uh John Day's city as well. And the opportunities that can be held and had at the fairgrounds will be increased. And I think it's a very worthy project, and as the fair board has uh. Done an excellent job of keeping an economic uh process going on there for our county and our cities as well. I really think it's something that should be done as quickly as possible and as funding that we have to do it. Um, take advantage of it and and complete this project as soon as possible, thank you.
Casey Williams, Fairgrounds. I've been working for the fairgrounds for twelve years now and I've seen the RV park here. Today's world, everybody owns an RV and there's a lot of travelers. What I see going on down here is hurting John Day as far as we're completely full. What I see going on down here is hurting John Day as far as we're completely full in the summertime. People travel through. Can I stay here? This year Clyde Holiday was closed most of the summer. No, sorry, we don't have anything. Where's the next town south? Burns. All right, see ya. They go to Burns. You, your community is losing their money because there's nowhere else to stay here. They're going to Burns, they're going to Baker, they're not staying in your restaurant motel or your restaurant, your gas station, your grocery store. So I really encourage you to move along with this. So it'll help the town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Darren, right here. Darren Timble, fair board. And I disagree with everybody that's in support here that we should have had this done last year. And the sooner we can move it on, the better because it's going to be nothing but throw, I think, for the town. It's going to help the town more than hurt it. So that's all I got.
Do we? Yes.
This is Blackburn. I also support all of this going on. I, um, I've had similar instances where my parents have come to visit and want to have a, an RV place to stay. The fair has been completely booked and specifically this year Clyde Holiday was down. And so, um, we've had parents stay at Bates State Park. We have family in Burns and so it's, yeah, losing opportunity for folks to stay here. And so I also agree. I also think that we've seen that, um, currently the fair is kind of being held to higher standards potentially that other folks have. Gates on different things, kind of this whole easement stuff. And so I think that, um, this is, well, I agree that it's cool to hi- like have high standards. If that's not the current standard, I think it's unfair to have the fair be solely responsible for some of these things.
Anyone else? Anyone here in opposition? Okay. So Mindy, you have an opportunity to rebut any comments, but I don't think there were any negative comments. So if you have anything to say.
No, but I can just add, you know, if we, if we can get move forward on this project and get it going, it will sustain the fairgrounds. So the fairgrounds is a county department, but we're independently funded, meaning we do not get any tax dollars. A lot of people say, say, well, I'm a taxpayer, so I can use whatever I want on the fairgrounds or whatever. So this is just another opportunity to tell you, we, everything we do on the fairgrounds, from our wages to, to insurance, everything, we pay, we pay for, um, by having events, um, of RV parks. So this will sustain the fairgrounds, which is the biggest economic driver in our county for years to come, way after we're all gone. So, uh, it's very important.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Henry. The, the neighbors around this property, were they all contacted and were there any comments from the neighbors?
Uh, yes, uh, this was, uh, published in the newspaper, this hearing, and then also Mindy held a neighborhood meeting, uh, months ago. Um, I received no comments ahead of time, other than what was submitted to you tonight.
Hey, we're going to close it. Go ahead.
One, one caveat to that. Um, we did, we did get one comment, but it wasn't from a neighbor. It's from the fair, uh, housing organization of Oregon. Um, and they just requested to receive the staff report and they usually, um, they're on the lookout for any zone changes that involve housing. So that's how they kind of, um, heard about this, this project, but they didn't submit any formal comment.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there one property owner that requested a privacy fence? Um, yeah, they just said if, um, that would be the, um, the cable component, but I can't think of her name. Start off the top of the head, uh, McCanna. They said just in the future, if we can, um, put a privacy fence up there, but nothing is really happening on that side of the property. So on that west side.
Isn't, doesn't the proposal have a six foot fence all the way around the whole property?
Correct.
So, okay, I guess I don't understand what the idea of security or privacy fence is. I'm not six feet tall, so.
And that would be on the city easement?
Yeah.
Cause that's right where the storm drains are, is right there.
Yeah.
They're right up against those houses on Elm Street.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and then, uh, we'll get to throw some things around. There's a lot of issues thrown up and Henry, I'm glad you're here. I mean, the startup was right away and storm drainage, sidewalks and landscaping and power lines and authorities to approve or disapprove things. And where does all this fit in with our decision, Henry?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I feel the same way. And let me go through my notes, um, on what Mindy and her team had said, uh, so that I understand her correctly. Um, and also give you some direction, um, because there was so much new information submitted just now. It's my opinion, we might be looking at a continuance to digest it all and to get it all in the record. And I would, highly suggest, uh, that Mindy put all of her comments and revisions, um, and things she does not, just that she doesn't agree with, um, in the record on paper form, uh, so we have that to bring forward to the city council. And so that the planning commission can make an informed decision and be aware of the points and the conditions that the applicant does not agree with. Um, so yes, 25 spots is correct, not 21. Um, and if I understood, uh, Mike right, um, or Mike and Mindy regarding the right of way and the sewer, um, yes, if there are issues with the right of way, but Mindy and her team believe that it's not their responsibility. It should be the city's responsibility. That's, that was my takeaway. Um, I also heard a 60 foot right of way mentioned. I'm not, the right of way right now, to my understanding is 120 feet and they want to go down to 90 feet. So the 60, if I heard that right, um, threw me off. Yeah. So my takeaway from conditions one and two, um, was that they need to be resolved, but it should not be their responsibility. Um, further, um, regarding the sewer easement, um, it's, I mean, based on Mike's, um, testimony, they can consider that one met or not even applicable anymore if Mike was able to verify that. Cause that's what we essentially ask in the condition and Mike has done that, uh, via his testimony. Oh, condition three, um, I don't see how a right of way permit is not required, um, because they will need to construct that new driveway approach, 40 feet wide. Condition four, oh, condition four is probably the biggest sticking point. Um, the applicant believes it's not their responsibility. Uh, they're willing to do uh, frontage improvements when the city starts the process of building a sidewalk on either side of their development. Uh, the applicant thinks the guarantee is a more appropriate way to proceed. Um, so planning commission might consider that as a middle ground perhaps. Um, if the planning commission does want to go with the guarantee route, they should identify which of the four conditions exist that give them that, um, authority to defer it. Oh, the landscape plan. So yes, Mindy cited, uh, there's no identified minimum percentage. Um, and I went and looked and she's right. The code is kind of lacking in that area. Um, it says each zone has its own established percentage of landscape. Uh, when you click on parks reserve, uh, there is no minimum, uh, percentage for landscaping. However, the code still does require a landscape plan. Oh, the, the, uh, city manager, um, so it's usually written with the highest local, um, city official being the city manager. Or, and the key part here is or their designate. It's more than likely always going to be their designate. Um, and in this case, their designate will be the public works director or the city engineer. So the city manager is likely not, you know, inspecting and improving anything. It's always their designate. Um, the power, power overhead is currently, or all powers currently overhead. They want to go overhead to a point and then underground as soon as they can. Um, condition 12. Um, condition 12, you could more or less frame that as informational if there are no improvements that need to be in easements, uh, to the city. And that one would just go away. Uh, 14 and 15, uh, would essentially go away if, uh, there were no frontage improvements built. Um, and I have nothing to add on 16, other than the planning commission, you know, consider it. So yeah, that, that was my, my notes from, uh, Mindy's testimony. So I mean, ge- given all that, I think the planning commission has a very large task of, uh, untangling all the new issues that were raised tonight. And if perhaps a continuance, um, is justified and it gives Mindy the time to put all of her disagreements into paper form so they can go in the record. And we can revise the staff report accordingly. Um, but of course that's up to the planning commission to decide. I guess I'll turn it back over to you at that point, uh, if you have any other questions or concerns.
Okay, um, the other three items, which to me seem fairly simple would be the fence and the free parking spaces and bike spaces. I mean, that's pretty simple.
Okay, um, yes, so um, in addition to what I just outlined, i- if the planning commission, um, wants to talk about the three items on the screen now, that would, there's no, we can certainly do that. Um, cause those need to be adjudicated at some point. Um, so the planning commission chair, do you want to go ahead and start that discussion on those three items?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I think all the, other issues will have to be researched out and good documentation and decision be made on those other ones. But the fence, I mean, what would this fence look like? Would it be four or six foot? Is it chain length? Is it rock? What is it?
Chairman, you, you can't address
Pardon me?
The laws, you can't address the, the audience or the applicant anymore. You're in deliberation. So this is time for you all to talk.
Okay.
Um, just keeping things, otherwise you'd have to.
Picture an example of the block.
I think there's a picture of it. I'm trying to find it. This is the applicant's written narrative. This is what I was referring to, um, when I mentioned the fence that, you know, ma- is existing nearby. It's an example of what they, what they had in mind. It's this right here. And it's near this public workshop on city property. So this is what they had in mind, something similar to that.
Yeah, thank you. Who have some comments from?
I, I have a question. It's, the sidewalk issue is, is sidewalk curb and gutter. Okay. So it's essentially a drainage thing. Are there any known? Are there any known drainage problems out there that would require that? Yeah, I mean, that's, if, if drainage is a problem and needs to be controlled, then that kind of changes my mind on the, you know, building the sidewalk curb and gutter right now.
I know I've blocked that a lot and I've never, and, and in the winter and I've.
It's pretty much dredge tailings down there. I think water disappears.
I think that's the point Henry was making is this is a lot of.
Um, so it's, I mean, that's probably a separate issue, but the all of, and I guess another point I wanted to make, all of the conditions that you see in the staff report, they're not made up. They're not the city manager's, you know, ideas. They're all from the development code. Every single condition can you, can tie back to an approval criteria. And this is exactly where that one comes from. And it says a city can require development of frontage of a street right there. So that's where that one comes from.
I appreciate that we want sidewalks, um, but with a one in front of state police is
Yeah.
What a joke. It's, it's like a bridge to nothing. I mean, and if they're saying that, that they're willing just to.
That they're willing to do the improvements when this, when we do the whole thing, which makes a lot more sense to me.
Me too.
Unless there's an immediate problem that needs to be addressed with drainage. Cause that's what curbs and gutters are. This is drainage. Yeah. It's not necessarily a beautiful thing.
Well, what I heard was the planner asking that these issues brought up tonight, some are new and some are in conflict with what the planner has already laid out according to code, that those issues be presented in paper for the record. And that will eventually go to city council or we could look at that again and decide on, on what, what looks good and what looks bad. Other thoughts about anything?
Well, to address the three, I mean, the first one we were talking about was the fence. I personally think that's a nice looking fence and you can see through it. The six feet should not be an issue. I agree.
Okay, so what?
So we check off the fence?
Check off the fence.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm tracking that. The fence not an issue, exception granted. Got it. That's, that's good.
And the next one was the parking?
Let me talk about the fence. I'm assuming the fence will have some gates in it other than the one where you enter the property, wouldn't it?
Yeah, um, there's a vehicle gate. And then there's, uh, I think there's two pedestrian acts, points, um, at the front and the back that pedestrians can get through, like a pedestrian gate. Yeah.
So do we have consensus on a six foot fence?
Sure.
I, I, yes.
Okay, yeah, we can go with the six foot. Now we come down to the three parking. One is handicap parking. You know, people bring their RVs in, they, they have the pickup or whatever it is there. And now we're talking about three additional ones somewhere over toward, I guess, the shower room.
Yeah, that was the restroom was where they were.
Yes. That to me is reasonable. I mean, I've been in parks before where yes, I had my vehicle here. The restroom's over there and, you know, my wife didn't want to walk over there, so she drives over there. So on my position is it's reasonable to expect the three parking spots.
I agree.
I agree. I agree. You have consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, I also agree with that. Um, and then the third one.
The third one is bikes and biking is a big deal these days. And a lot of these campers coming in, you see them on the back of the pickup or on the back of the camper or whatever. And again, if they want to ride their bike over to the restroom, that's fine. So I'm in support of bike racks.
So the question was, wouldn't it be how many we need, if any?
Well, I think the plan was a minimum of three, but I, I don't, I don't know, you know, how we would judge.
Yeah, I, I can walk you back through the bike, um, standards here. Um, so I guess, like I said, it's kind of, it's twofold really. There's no clear direction, um, for this type of use. The closest would be this institutional category, parks, active recreation areas only. And that is eight spaces or as required by the city. So if the planning commission finds that, yes, an RV park is parks, active recreation areas, then, then it applies and they can either require eight or as required by the city.
So what does a bike parking spot look like? Is that just a rack?
It, yeah, it's usually just, um, it's like a big loop. And you can put one, one loop usually can have a bike on each side. So one loop, um, can accommodate two bikes.
So I'm just trying to imagine being in an RV park and wanting to drive my, ride my, I mean, I park my bike at the spot, wouldn't you? At your space.
Well, you park where you're camping, but let's say you want to go to the laundry room or the restroom, you're telling your bike over there. The bike racks I'm familiar with, like a Grant Union, they're just a metal frame and have slots and it looks like maybe eight or 10 slots. And I've never seen one at three slots. So I, I think from a practical point, something like that, let's go for the, the maximum. Maybe not using it all, but if we had three, yeah. I think some bike will be like. That's, what is that?
That's, that's, yeah, that's your bike rack. That's the standard bike rack that you'll see.
We don't have those in Grant County, Henry.
I mean, they can look, they can look many different forms, but this is a very basic standard bike rack that can accommodate a bike on each side.
Yeah, okay, I got it. So I, I would move for more than three. I don't know about that particular style, but I would think let's go for more than three. Other comments?
Well, it was like I was asking a question here. Are, are there any? Well, I it was like I was asking a question here. Are are there any tent sites in this? Okay, because I know that's kind of a bike thing. Yeah, I actually had that as a question myself, sorry.
And you don't want to take this again?
I can't interact.
So I guess the question on the table now, do we want three or we are more than three bike?
Is three the minimum the city requires on if we're gonna do bikes?
By the chart, I think wasn't there allowed for two also? But three is, I mean, in my opinion, would be fine.
If if you if you required um like one, one loop, it that's essentially two, it can accommodate two bikes. But there, like I said, there are many different forms of bike racks. It'd really be up to the applicant, you know, I think the city would be amenable to any any form of uh bicycle parking.
Or would we just make a minimum? Airgrounds, build what they want?
I mean, i- if the planning commission is is thinking that the the bike standards are triggered, I I tend to agree with the comment made that, you know, I I when I go to RV parks, the the bikes are already attached to the back of the RV and they more or less will stay at the RV spot itself. Um either, you know, attached to the RV or maybe leaning up against it. But that does, I I don't think there'll be a big um rush of people biking a short distance down to the laundry and bathroom facilities. I expect they'd probably walk more. But bicycling is growing and and I know John Day sees its amount, fair amount of bike bicyclists come through. Um so perhaps maybe just accommodating two bikes, um essentially, you know, w- one loop uh would be sufficient.
I think two is sufficient in my, in my opinion.
And it's quite, well, I wouldn't say nothing's quite easy, but um it the the bathroom uh pad, the concrete pad that's gonna uh, the bathroom's gonna be on can likely accommodate a simple bike loop rack.
Maybe we have bigger fish to fry than bikes, basically. So I would say let's just go with the recommended three. Right, and you know, if we're also necessitates it later, then they could choose to put more in. But let's just wrap that one up and say three. Can we agree on that?
So so the planning commission i- is, their recommendation is to require three, three bicycle parking spots? Okay, I I will note that. So those three items, um thank you for addressing those.
So so one of the issues that I read when I read all that material is is this proposal in the public interest. And we found a lot of testimony here that is needed. Uh I I I find nothing to say it's not in the public interest. We have not had anyone stand up and say, no, 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 we don't need that. So I think that we can we can confirm that that's a a major issue. Henry, is this a situation where we can close the hearing and leave the record open?
Yeah, the planning commission can certainly um consider that, um given, like I said, given the amount of new information that was received tonight. Um and the kind of the issues the planning commission has to kind of wade through and digest. Um and some of the, some of the disagreements noted by the applicant, um you know, they don't agree with a lot of the conditions. Uh I I would, i- if you, if you're going that route, I would suggest just continuing the hearing. Um that the record, that means the record remains open um and we just reconvene at a later date to pick this up again, essentially. Um and what would happen in the meantime is uh the applicant, Mindy and their team uh would, you know, submit additional evidence into the record, um noting where they disagree with, you know, staff's recommendation or the findings or the conditions or what have you. Um and we would uh prepare a revised staff report for the planning commission um where hopefully we can have these issues more flushed out um and be in a position to take this to the city council in December.
Okay, so I we have two options, is to try to go through all these things that have come up as having issues or get more information in, close the hearing, have the record and come back at a later date with more information.
That's tha- that's right. That that's how I see it.
We can't resolve all these issues about right-of-way and drainage and landscaping tonight. So my position would be keep the record open and come back later day.
I agree with that.
Can we set a date so that there's a
I think that's a time issue, isn't there?
So if the planning commission wants to continue the hearing, um they should announce a date right now. Essentially, it you should, and this, this is everyone's notice. You don't have to renotice. Um basically, everyone that, you know, has an interest in this project development application is there right now. Um so they will be noticed immediately of the the date and time of the continued hearing.
Hey, Henry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw something at you. Since since they're the planning commission and they're making a recommendation, they're not actually making a decision. Can they punt some of this to the council so that it gives the applicant time to work some through some of this? Get their um additional information submitted into the packet for council so that this gets worked out at council so they can punt these bigger issues?
Um I would generally, yes, I would agree with you, but I think given the amount of issues that remain and things that remain unresolved, I think they need to be flushed out so the planning commission can make an informed recommendation to bring to the city council. Or else we're just kicking all of these very large issues to the city council with no really adjudication before it reached them. Um the 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 two that I think that can proceed on are noted in the staff report and those were the the right-of-way discrepancy and the sewer easement. Those two I specifically noted in the findings um that the planning commission can say, yes, continue on working on these um before you get to the the city council hearing. But given the amount of issues that were raised tonight and the new information, um and the things that still need to be worked through, I I think, um I don't think that would be appropriate, in my opinion.
We need a date. Yeah, what's our
Zone change, the Did we do that?
Look, I'm sorry, say again, the the zoning change.
Can we do?
Determine that tonight?
Can we determine? I mean, that seems pretty cut and dry.
I'm glad, yes, that is an excellent point. Um you can decide, you can make your recommendation for a city council on the zone change portion tonight. Uh because like I said in the in the staff report and the presentation, um I found all the criteria met. Now, four was kind of up in the air, but the planning commission just talked about that it's absolutely in the public interest. So yes, you can, you can adjudicate that one tonight um and recommend approval onto the city council. Um so therefore you, when you reconvene, you'd only be looking at the site design review uh criteria.
Make a motion and we approve that.
Someone in favor?
At least it moves.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, that that's half of the problem. You you that's, the zone change is, yeah, it's uh much more straightforward.
So time-wise, between now and when we come back, uh course, calendar is one issue, but what is today? The twenty-second?
Yeah, um let's, let me see if I can And and the ci- uh the city manager can probably weigh in here too as, um you know, they need, they manage kind of the planning commission's schedule and the city council's needs. So Melissa, feel free to, you know, um participate in this discussion as well. All right, so October twenty-second. So presently, the city council hearing is noticed for December ninth?
Ninth.
Ninth. Um so that gives us a healthy amount of time to work through these issues. Now, I would, I would suggest uh giving, of course, giving the applicant the time they need to um shore up things on their end, to make their arguments in written form, um and get those into the record. And then also, you know, staff time to get those arguments into a revised staff report and a revised recommendation and revised conditions, you know, if if that's necessary. Um so I typically, um what's done in these situations is each party is afforded seven days. So the applicant has seven days to get their stuff to the city and then the city has seven days to, you know, get the materials out ahead of the next hearing.
The twelfth?
So I I think the the middle portion of November looks pretty, pretty good, honestly.
About the November?
The twelfth is the after Veterans Day?
Yeah, um I don't know if if there's anybody in here though, that's that's the problem.
You don't know what?
So I guess here's the question, if um the twelfth would still keep us on track for council, right, to go to council on the the ninth? If we get, if we have it on the twelve, that's plenty of time, correct, Henry?
I- if they decide on the twelfth, yes, that's plenty of time to get everything compiled for city council, yes. Was that your story? Was that your question that?
Do you, do you know of anything going on?
I don't think so.
So the twelfth, is there a time?
Oh, so you're you're asking the twelfth, what time? I would say five-thirty, just like we did tonight.
So the applicant's gonna a- address their concerns in writing and and does that go to the city manager?
No, that goes to
Yeah, the applicant can Directly to me, yeah, um the Mindy and her applicant team can send, you know, additional evidence um to me um via email, that that will be fine. I can keep that and, you know, distribute it appropriately. I can be the keeper of the record, sure. So are are we ready to adjourn and and continue?
I think where we are, we're gonna close the hearing, keep the record open, obtain the information, reconvene on the twelfth of of November.
At five-thirty, okay.
Are we keeping the hearing open or are we closing the hearing?
Um, okay, so, yeah, I mean, so I all the testimony tonight was in support, there was no opposition. So if the planning commission feels everybody that is interested in this had an opportunity to speak, yes, you can close the hearing. Again, this is another step in the right direction to get this thing, you know, approved. Close the hearing and keep the record open. That way, Mindy and her team can submit all that in extra information. Um and then we can, you know, analyze it and produce a revised staff report. So yes, I believe you can close the hearing and keep the record open.
Is that what the commission wants to do?
Just keep it going.
That's where we're going.
Yeah, if we need it open, every little testimony, then there's more paperwork and
So I think we'll reduce to a turn of it.
Any planning commission comments? Um I have nothing. If you didn't fill out
Can we comment now that you're done deliberating?
If it's not on this, if it's other stuff, yes. Um if you did not fill out a form, please fill out a form if you spoke because you're a part of the record and we have to have that. Other than that?
One of the things we did not do, Melissa, is open the floor for public comments on anything other than this matter. So is there anyone here who wants to public comment about something else other than this tonight? I'm sorry, we skipped over that. Okay, good. Now we can adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.